Damian, can you hear me? It appears we're having some audio difficulty. If you could hold on one moment, please. Okay, go ahead.
Are you testing somebody's microphone?
Yeah, go ahead. I can hear you now.
Okay. Okay. So, welcome to the City of Cattati Planning Commission meeting of March 21st, 2022. Can we have a roll call for attendance?
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yeah.
Chair Lemus?
Here. Thank you. The next item is approval of the minutes, and I think that we discussed last time that we had enough to approve the minutes that we've been trying to approve. So, we probably need to approve them separately. So, for the June 21st?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, so.
Did you want a vote?
Yes, let's have a vote.
Roll call? Okay, Chair Murphy? Excuse me, Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Okay, now for the minutes of September 7th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 7th.
I'll second.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. And then for the special meeting of January 18th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 18th, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, can we get a roll call on January 18th?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Okay, glad we got those out of the way. Have there been any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Chair Lemus.
Thank you so much. And I did see that we got some emails with additional communications. Has there been any other communications for tonight?
Carrie, have you received any other communications?
Uh, thank you. Um, no, we have not received any oral or written communications.
So Chair Lemus, just those three comment letters that came in after the agenda was published in support of the cannabis changes.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Okay, so, okay, the next one is matters at hand, and that's a report we'll be receiving?
Yeah, and just to clarify, this will be a public hearing. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Noah, did you want to lead off, or should I just go get right into it?
Oh, yeah, I'll give a brief introduction. So, thank you. It's never stopped frozen.
I can't hear him. No, he's frozen.
Yeah, well, if you all can hear me, then maybe I'll start up, and then if he can get back in, then he can finish his thoughts. All right. Well, good evening, Commissioners. The proposed ordinance in front of you tonight is an ordinance that will make changes, as you know, to the commercial cannabis ordinance. And Chair Lemus, Commissioners, City? And if, uh, I, I think I was gonna say what, what he was about to say, which is if you don't know who I am, I'm Damian Obed, I'm the city manager, and so I'll be just taking the lead on the report tonight. Um, in terms of history, just a real brief history on how we got to where we are today. In 2007, the city adopted ordinance 787, which allowed one medicinal cannabis dispensary in Cattati. Um, in 2010, Mercy Wellness opened as the sole medicinal cannabis dispensary in Cattati. In 20, uh, November of 2016, California voters voted to legalize adult-use cannabis. This is Prop 64, otherwise known as Prop 64. Um, an interesting little side note to that legalization vote in 2016 is that Cattati voters voted yes on Prop 64 with a 62% yes vote, which is essentially tied with Sebastopol for the highest yes vote in Sonoma County, which I was actually surprised about when I, when I saw the vote count. Um, in 2017, as follow-up from Prop 64, the state passed a series of legislative actions to establish a uniform licensing regime for adult use and medicinal cannabis, and when that all became effective on January 1st, 2018. In 2017, Cattati voters approved a cannabis business tax with a yes vote of 79%. This is, um, was known as Measure G at the time. In 2018, on the heels of that, um, business tax approval, the city adopted ordinance 883, which created the current commercial cannabis ordinance that we use today, which exists under Title 17 of our municipal code. Um, prior to bringing the draft that's in the packet tonight to the planning commission, staff circulated the draft ordinance to all of our active permitted cannabis businesses to get their initial input. And, um, in the packet, you'll see a comment letter from Mercy Wellness, who provided some detailed input on the draft ordinance, which is, um, as I mentioned, attached to the ordinance, or ta- attached to the packet tonight. And, um, in terms of our existing cannabis permits today, most of our permits haven't been issued. So, we have just a couple unissued allocations for cannabis permits, but, um, uh, only three businesses are currently in operation. We have a micro business, a non-storefront retailer, and, um, a level-one manufacturing. So, what we're talking about tonight primarily affects our retail and micro business permits, which is limited under ordinance to two, and that's not proposed to change in this revision tonight. And, um, revisions, sort of in summary, do a handful of things. One is they, they clean up various non-substantive code provisions. Uh, they would remove, um, the changes proposed would remove the use permit requirement for level-two manufacturing and micro businesses. It would allow for onsite consumption at a lounge or cafe when it's associated with a city-permitted retailer or micro business with a retail use with city council approval. Um, it would expand operating hours for storefront retailers, and it would amend the smoking ordinance um, by creating an exception for smoking or vaping cannabis consumption lounge café with, um, under the specified conditions and controls. So, kind of taking these, um, one by one, the use permit removal. So, um, the impetus for this was that staff has had a substantial amount of experience now processing cannabis permit applications, and we found that, um, that in processing the commercial cannabis permit, we're already asking for the applicant. We're already asking the applicant to provide the materials we would otherwise need and use permit. So, um, the end result is we're essentially making the applicant go through the same process twice, which creates unnecessary costs and delay for the applicant. But, um, it also is awkward in some other ways, too, because if, um, uh, the way, the way this works is the city council approves the cannabis permit, but then they would have to go back to the planning commission for a use permit. And even though this hasn't happened, hypothetically, if the, if the planning commission were to deny the use permit, um, that would be awkward because it would be a permitted business by the city council, so it could create sort of a conflict there. And by consolidating all this, um, it would eliminate that potential for conflict. The use of, uh, so the addition of a lounge. I will say that the cannabis industry, you know, continues to evolve as it's maturing, and, um, some of the needs, especially, um, as we're talking about tonight with retailers, some of the needs are becoming clearer to be able to survive, and specifically to be able to survive in Sonoma County where, um, where as we get into 2023 and some of the bigger, um, uh, the state limits on large cannabis grows will, um, no longer apply. Um, you're gonna start to see more and more, probably, um, you know, cannabis becoming more and more of a commodity. And so, Sonoma County, Sonoma County's place in the, um, in the cannabis industry will, will more likely continue to move towards something closer to what the wine industry is, where, um, really trying to take advantage of the, um, you know, the appellation and the, um, uh, being able to sell it as a premium product as opposed to a mass-produced product that might be grown somewhere else. And, um, and also the experiential element, which, um, requires onsite consumption. So, um, currently, in terms of lounges, locally, Santa Rosa allows consumption lounges. And then in the state, um, just some other cities that, uh, that we're aware of that'll, that allow lounges include San Francisco, West Hollywood, Imperial City, Palm Springs, Colinga, and Lompoc. And, uh, under state law, currently, they're required to be within And, uh, under state law, currently, they're required to be within the state-licensed premises of a retailer, so they can't be, some other location may have to be within the licensed area of the retailer. To order, in order to enter a consumption lounge, you must be twenty-one years of, of age or older. So, um, that excludes, um, one potential category of people, like if there's a medicinal user that's over eighteen but under twenty-one, that would be allowed into the lounge, um, so you have to be twenty-one or older. Um, currently, the state does not allow food service in lounges. Um, what happens right now with lounges typically is that food is delivered from an, from a, um, restaurant or something to the lounge. But there is, um, a couple of things pending at the state level, so one is, um, the Bureau of Cannabis Control's been operating under a series of, um, emergency regulations. And they're in the process right now, actually, they're taking public comment on permanent regulations, which, among other things, would, um, clean up some of the, and clarify some of the food, uh, non-cannabis food, um, limitations and requirements, and that would, um, if the regulations are adopted as currently written, they would allow the sale of prepackaged non-cannabis foods and non-alcoholic beverages. Um, alcohol is not allowed in, um, in cannabis retail facilities or lounges, period, so, um, that's just consistent with state law there. And also, there is, um, a pending bill which, um, may or may not go forward, it's AB ten thirty-four, which also appears to allow preparation of non-cannabis food beyond just the prepackaged food. One thing I will point out is the consumption lounges, um, the ordinance language doesn't have an explicit limit on the size of the lounge, um, but it must be approved by the city council through an amended cannabis permit, so, um, the applicant would have to, among, you know, among all the other, um, materials they'd have to provide, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a second. Um, they would have to obviously show where the, um, consumption lounge space would be, and, um, and the size of that would be a conversation that would happen, um, through the permitting process. Um, the proposed ordinance does expand the hours for retail, so, um, the, uh, retail would just be expanded to be consistent with state law. Right now, um, hours are restricted, um, beyond what state law requires. So right now, the hours are restricted from ten AM to seven PM for retail sales. Um, if the changes were approved, they would go from eight AM to ten PM, which, as I mentioned, is state law. Um, and this would also affect associated consumption lounges and, um, deliveries. And is finally, in terms of, uh, sort of big-picture changes, um, we spend a lot of time looking at and researching the mode of consumption, as well as related public safety issues with our cannabis businesses, so, um, based on what we've seen in other, um, consumption lounges in the state, as well as, um, just talking locally with our own businesses, smoking or vaping is, um, likely the preferred method of consumption, and, um, it also, you know, happens to be the easiest to monitor, which is good in terms of, uh, easiest to monitor in terms of intoxication. But in order to allow this, um, we would need the exception to the smoking ordinance, um, and that, you know, the smoking ordinance exception, which is also in the packet, um, mostly focuses on the control, um, to avoid exposure to secondhand smoke and also odor control from the space where any smoking or vaping might occur. Um, the other mode of, um, consumption is edibles, um, but this has the potential to have significantly delayed on intoxic- intoxication, so it requires a different approach to responsible service. So in the world of alcohol, you have, um, ABC has responsible beverage service, and, um, we would have to, with our businesses, develop a, basically a similar program here so, for responsible, um, service, and I think if it was smoking or vaping, it would likely be a different approach, or at least partially different approach than what would be required for any sort of edible consumption onsite. And, um, um, and this would be, this would be basically something we'd work with on the permit, with the permit applicants, and, um, develop programs to effectively monitor their customers and en- ensure everyone has a safe ride home. And, um, just like, uh, and although there's not a defensible, like, breathalyzer test to alcohol, I think the well-known breathalyzer test that's de- defendable in court, so for example, if you pull someone over that's intoxicated with alcohol, it's, um, there's a breathalyzer test for that. But for everything else, all the other, um, thing, all the other intoxicants, whether it's cannabis or anything else, prescription med- medications or anything, we rely on a field sobriety test. So that would be the method if, um, if the individual does leave, you know, the consumption lounge or intoxicated, that's the method of determining intoxication and, um, and ensuring that the roads stay safe. And, um, it was written, the ordinance was written pretty broadly to allow for creative solutions, so, um, we can maximize, hopefully, um, public safety, both through the onsite monitoring and controls that the, um, business itself implements, but also, um, you know, making sure that we have the tools we need to, um, to ensure safe roads. And then, um, with the, with the cannabis lounges itself, in the app, so when someone's gonna apply for, um, consumption lounge or amend their existing permit for a consumption lounge, one of the, um, one of the requirements is, has to be on the same legal parcel as the associated retail dispensary. Um, right now, that's not a really an issue, because under state law, they have to be part of the same, um, premises as the retail, but you never know, state law can change, so it just keeps it there, so the lounge can't be somewhere off-site from the retail location. There's provisions for describing how, um, delivery will occur, so in, in other places where there's consumption lounges, often what happens is somebody will go to the retail area and they'll literally walk into a separate part of the business that is a consumption area. Um, but there's other, um, other potential delivery methods, and we just want to make sure that the, um, means of delivery, if it is delivery, is, um, secure and safe. There's a provision in the, in this that if they are gonna prepare food, this is just an anticipation of some sort of food, um, sales or preparation at some point in the future, making sure that they comply with all the retail food code requirements as well, as well as the health and safety requirements. One thing I will point out, um, is that if, uh, if, um, although the, the permitting of the, um, lounge itself requires the council to approve, if there's um, in the future, some ability to sell non-cannabis food, then that, um, is delegated to the city manager for, um, review authority, just for that narrow scope. Uh, as I mentioned, alcohol is not, just not permitted, period, in these areas, because it's permitted, it's not allowed under state law, and also just generally probably not a good idea. Tobacco is also not allowed on the premises. Uh, there's a section that basically asks that the, um, sale to customers in the consumption lounge is consistent with personal possession and use limits, um, and protect, so in other words, it's not an excessive, hopefully an excessive amount of cannabis sale to an individual. Um, and also that the, um, business implements a, uh, responsible cannabis service program, as well as a safe driver program acceptable to the city, um, including managing, um, edible delayed onset intoxication. And, um, there's also associated provisions about if there is any retail sales in the future, that, that's consistent with the retail, um, controls. And then, um, anything that's not, if it's consumed in the lounge, but it's removed from the lounge, that it's, um, put back in the original packaging. Um, any consumption in the lounge can't be viewed from any public place or non-age-restricted area. And, um, the lounge itself has to be a, um, a definite distinct place, that, separate from where the, um, like the retail areas occur. And then there's the required just signage and posting about, um, about, you know, outside the consumption lounge. So that's a quick run-through of the proposed permit requirement, and, um, I think that covers it. We already talked about, there were some letters received after the packet was posted, which was attached, and I think you all probably received them separately as well. But, um, with that, I'd be happy to, um, answer any questions.
Uh, thank you so much for, um, that report. Now I want to go to the commissioners, given the commissioners have, uh, questions on this report and the request tonight. But, uh, Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, hello, um, thank you. Uh, just wondering on that point of the, um, safe consumption, just how, I, you know, what's, that's obviously a key part of it, um, but how do you s- um, see that working with the, um, the business? I mean, is there, is there a, this is a, obviously an evolving area, but, um, and I know you've touched on it somewhat, but can you maybe talk a little bit about, has there been any discussion with the owners? Um, or how it, uh, how would that work?
Uh, yeah, so, um, in terms of safe consumption, there's, a- as I mentioned, there's two, probably two different approaches for smoking versus edible consumption. We, we have, um, we have started conversations with some of the business owners about that, and I think, um, there's some of the, some of the themes that we've discussed, and these are the, these are the things that we would have to ultimately vet out with, um, our police department in that application, and kind of work out all the details with staff and, and police department staff and the owners, the businesses, and then ultimately the council approval, but, um, some factors is, that we've talked about is making sure that there's, um, controls such as, uh, knowing who the customer is, because different people have different tolerance levels for cannabis, and, um, and setting up different, um, a program that's kind of like a sliding scale based on, you know, is this a customer that comes a lot, and how much they normally purchase, and how experienced are they, or are they kind of like a cannabis tourist? And, um, they're probably gonna get it, become intoxicated on a much smaller amount than, um, someone that's a frequent user of cannabis would be intoxicated. So there's, we've had conversations with our businesses about that, um, about creating some sort of sliding scale program where they can, um, more effectively monitor people based on their experience with cannabis, but also the mode of consumption. And then, um, and then finally, just as a catch-all, a surveillance program and making sure that there's a, um, ultimately a safe ride home if someone does get too intoxicated, and they just really shouldn't be driving.
Thank you, that sounds good, yeah. Nice to hear that discussion's been happening. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I will go to Commissioner Moore.
So I just had a couple of questions, Damian, and on one of them was, um, alcohol consumption. So if someone had been drinking and went into a, a, the cafe, would that be monitored, um, or could they leave and say, go to Grab South, have beers, and then go to the cafe? Um, that would be one of my concerns. Um, and how that would be monitored? And then, um, so I think that would be my, my concern, is somebody came in and they were already, you know, e- even just a beer or two can affect when you're imbibing in cannabis. So I'm just wondering if that conversation is, is happened. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so not that specific conversation, but there's been a broader conversation about responsible service of cannabis, and I think, um, the point you bring up's a great point, because, um, well, alcohol is just not allowed, um, onsite, period, but there is that scenario, right, where someone maybe is drinking off-site and they come already, already drunk, for example, or already, you know, severely impaired or significantly impaired with alcohol, and, you know, what's the approach to that? And I think, um, that's a good, it's a good conversation to have as we develop that responsible service program, because if someone comes in already intoxicated, that's probably a different approach than somebody that's clearly not intoxicated when they enter, you know?
And just my, my point to that, too, is you may not be really intoxicated having just a couple beers, but after you have a couple beers and and smoke, then you might be really intoxicated. So I just feel like you said, the tourists that come through that, you know, maybe are having wine tasting all day, and they want to go in and experience, you know, um, our cannabis lounge. You know, maybe they're not intoxicated when they get there, but after they smoke, they're definitely gonna be intoxicated. So I, I think it's just, I don't know, I think that's definitely a conversation to have, um, with the folks that are gonna be having this.
Yeah, understood, okay.
I was gonna ask, has that Chief Parrish had some input into this question?
Uh, yeah, so Commissioner Moore, you raised a good point there. Um, I'm thinking that maybe one way to deal with that is because we can test for blood alcohol level, um, have a, uh, analyzer at the lounge and come up with a, a point level for alcohol that both the police department and maybe the industry is comfortable with. Um, but it, you do raise a, a good point, and I think, um, there is a way to, um, to work it in.
Thank you, and now we'll go to, uh, Commissioner Murphy.
I was curious, um, if there's similarities perhaps with alcohol permits and these types of permits, or maybe since this is new, it's something to explore, but are there any sort of safeguards or, um, anything drafted in place that, you know, should they not follow specific rules within the ordinance, or, or maybe within the broader rules of having this sort of permit that there, a permit would be revoked, or, um, could you talk a little bit more about that, so we could understand what those are?
Yeah, uh, so right now with the cannabis permits, they are, um, they have to, uh, they have to renew already, um, but even, even outside of the renewal periods, um, if they are just a bad actor and not complying and clearly being a problem or creating a problem, we can also, um, just revoke, or we can revoke their cannabis permits as well under the existing ordinance. So they have a, they have a strong incentive to follow the rules, for sure.
Thanks, that's helpful. Thank you, and I just have a brief question before we go to public comment. Uh, my question is, uh, regarding the smoking ordinance, modifying the smoking ordinance and allowing smoking for the vaping and that, and and consumption for the, and the smoking inside, is that going to be inside, um, the facility? Or will some of the smoking be allowed, or vaping be allowed outside of the facility?
Well, I think, you know, the, um, the, I think the idea is that it would happen, um, primarily, sorry, one second.
That's okay.
Okay, so, um, it'd be primarily indoors, um, and in, just, you know, um, like a negative pressure space is the idea, um, with filtered. Um, can create odor problems, and so, um, I think indoors, the primary, we'll see it. If there is an outdoor proposal, we'd have to be satisfied that they have the odor control issues, um, taken care of, and the secondhand smoke issues.
Okay, okay, so if there was a proposal for an outdoor, then that would require some additional, uh, verification by, by the city and approval. Okay. Well, those are some questions that I had so far. Um, can we, I know that we all reviewed, uh, some of the comments we received ahead of time from the public. Is there anyone here, uh, that wanted to speak to it either on phone or on Zoom? From the public?
We have two hands up. Chair Lemus?
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, why don't we have, give them, how much do we typically give?
Go ahead, Brandon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to further your already successful cannabis ordinance. Some of you may already know me, my name is Brandon Levine. I'm the founder and CEO of Mercy Wellness, as well as other multiple cannabis businesses. We opened the first Mercy Wellness in June of two thousand and ten in Cattati. Over the past twelve years, we have learned a whole lot and grown to employ close to a hundred people. During this time, we have had a great partnership with the city of Cattati, and we look forward to more of this growth here. I, I hear some of the concerns that you guys have. And I believe that with our extensive research and knowledge that we can alleviate a lot of the concerns. This will take some time, obviously, to be in communication with you and be able to present some of these solutions for the concerns you may have. If you are concerned about some of the hurdles along with this use, maybe you might consider running a pilot program for the onsite consumption. Given how long we've been in business in Cattati with our extensive experience, I believe that we are a perfect candidate for piloting such a cannabis consumption lounge. And we are, regardless of your guys' decision on this, we are in full support of whatever decision you make for the city of Cattati, and we'll continue to be an asset and contributor to the city of Cattati. Thank you for your time. I am available for questions and even tours. Should you have any other questions or concerns? We'd love to walk you, any of you through the facility and give a better understanding of how we might see things work for us here and how we can make it work for the city as well. Thank you.
Go ahead, Felicia.
Good afternoon. This is Felicia Akamazo. I'm the Operations Director for Mercy Wellness. Mercy's number one priority for the onsite consumption lounge is safety. No matter what, we will remain diligent in the conduct and state of our customers. We realize this requires hyper vigilance and we are prepared to adopt policies mirroring the beer, wine and alcohol industries. We are developing an extensive responsible consumption service program similar to the ABC's responsible beverage service. We will require onsite consumption lounge employees to go through this rigorous training. Mercy's responsible consumption, consumption service program will be more comprehensive than the existing cannabis consumption laws by design. It's our responsibility as the, one of the first consumption lounges in the state to go above and beyond what is needed to create a safe space to consume recreational medicinal cannabis. These protocols will prevent over serving to any of our patrons and exclude sales to minors under the age of twenty one. Mercy employees will diligently educate customers in an effort to ensure responsible consumption. We will have a membership agreement that every patron must sign, and if broken, we have the right to revoke their membership. Driving impaired or under the influence is against the law in California, period. Employees at our facility will be trained extensively on the methods of recognizing impairment. Mercy's responsible consumption service policy will allow us to stop serving a person for any reason we deem necessary. We will also slow consumption service if needed and offer water or non alcoholic beverage or food to help those who may be impaired. We want to make it easy for customers to make the right choices. Ridesharing services will be made available to those that need it. Mercy will also incentivize those who designate a driver or use a rideshare company such as Uber or Lyft to our facility. Mercy will be transparent about our measures to keep our customers and the community safe. Our team will continue to share information and keep the communication lines open to the city, city officials, law enforcement and the public. While access to adult use cannabis has increased since legalization in two thousand and sixteen, many have been left without a safe place to consume cannabis. We received numerous letters of support that they are unable to consume at home because of children, or they live in an apartment where you cannot consume. And those folks are actually left and resulting to smoking either in public or driving around in their vehicles. Mercy Wellness hopes to provide this space for education and responsible accessible consumption. And we greatly appreciate the city of Cattati for considering this next step in the evolution of our local and legal cannabis industries. Thank you.
Chair Lemus, that is all for public comment.
Thank you so much. And so now we'll bring it back to the commission for any other questions that may have risen during that time. Does anyone else have a question? Any other commissioners? Okay, I'm hearing no questions. And do we want to move into, anybody want to make a motion?
I can make a motion. Sorry, let me find the resolution here real fast.
On page twenty nine.
Thank you. Okay. I will make a motion in support of the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cattati recommending amending Title Nine, Chapter nine point three one by amending Section nine point three one point zero six zero. Amending Title seventeen, Chapter seventeen point two two by amending Table two dash two and Chapter seventeen point four two by amending Section seventeen point four two point two zero zero. Amending Chapter seventeen point nine and adoption of exemption findings pursuant to the California Environment Quality Act.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Moore? Okay. Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Has Commissioner Moore, is her, did she vote? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yes, she voted yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So it sounds like it's approved. This change to ordinance is approved. And thank you so much, staff and everybody, all the public that provided input to this. Thank you so much. Let's move on to the next item, which is reports by commission. Any commissioners have any reports today?
I could make a short commentary, a kind of report.
Yes.
So it's just on the pedestrian lights, very much appreciate the new pedestrian lights around town, the flashing pedestrian lights. But I'm, I'm also noticing, so coming back last Saturday, the pedestrian light with West Sierra and Cypress, the new one that's up there, they flashed up as I was coming at ten o'clock at night, which was very good. It was absolutely excellent that they notified me, but the people walking across were not visible. So it was kind of, you know, I mean, we're looking for the safety issue and I, I think it really needs some lights on the flashing lights as well, that when a pedestrian activates, that you can see, you know, something that, some visual lights that come on would be really beneficial. So the flashing lights did do, do work very nicely to, to make it visible to drivers, I think. But at nighttime, it would be just nice to have that, that lit up. And that probably means more power for the, the solar panel type things, but that was just, it just wasn't that visible, the pedestrians on the pedestrian crossing and just that issue of, of public safety, I think is a very visible one. So thank you very much. Anyway, that's my report.
Thank you so much for that observation. Anybody else have any, anything to report from the commission? Okay. Was there any items received after the agenda was posted?
Thank you, Chair Lemus. Just those letters.
Yes, thank you. We did receive them and read them. Yes. Thank you so much. Okay. So if there's no other questions, then it sounds like we can adjourn for the night.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.